To mitigate or prevent the risk, lower the risk of a injury or worse at a work site. And we talked about several things. There were several ideas brought forward. So I wanted to just report back that we are thinking about that topic and specifically, we know that we've had several fatalities during work-related fatalities over the years. The most recent was on State Road 28 East. And it's that specific experience that triggered me into thinking, well, are we doing all we can do? So we're thinking about that. Some ideas were brought forward. And when we get together again to talk about that some more, we'll maybe have something to report back to the board. So just let you know, we're working on that. It has to do with, in that event, regardless of having a flagger on the proper station, regardless of the trucks being where they were, someone not paying attention or asleep or having a medical episode was driving a car and ran into the rear of one of our vehicles, crashing one of our employees' legs. And if you look at state highway guidelines, we were not wrong in doing what we did. In fact, they did not require us to do everything we even did. We did more than was required. But there might be some extra steps we could take in the future to prevent such an occurrence. So that's what we're looking at. So, thank you.
Okay.
And Rick, that was actually a drug-related instance.
There's another possible cause.
Yeah, is what that one was.
Thank you for that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. You got a couple of updates on the actions that were taken?
Yes, on the 69 KV line across town, that came up for vote a week and a half ago. The, I think it was August 22nd? Yeah, August 22nd at IMPA. And it passed unanimously with one abstaining, which was me, on that part of it. So that is a done deal now. All the paperwork has been signed. Alicia's got copy, or has copies. I have copies. So that part is taken care of. And then it was last Monday at the city council meeting. They approved the contract extension as well, and that paperwork has all been done, signed, I believe. Do you have the copies back yet?
No, I'm waiting on a couple of documents from Carol.
Oh, okay.
I'll follow up with her.
But it is done and taken care of. So that's it.
And that's the contract extension for IMPA supplying us electrical power?
Our purchase power.
Yeah.
Yes. Another thing too, it's been, I don't know, four weeks ago, Mike, that you brought up and had pictures of the like how we buy houses, stuff like that on our poles. I spoke with the code enforcement, Eddie Russell. And when they see him, they've been going and taking them down, and they're still doing that. And then Jason Earl, as he is doing our disconnects and reconnects and rereads, if he sees anywhere around town, because he's the one that's around town more, he is stopping and also just pulling those signs down. So if you guys come across some, let me know and we'll sit Jason on it.
If you're a member of the USB, can you take them off?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Because I've been wondering that might, I got two.
Just wanted to make sure I wasn't going to be in trouble.
No, no, because they've actually been doing it. But Eddie told me, he says, sometimes they go up as fast as they come down. Now, if it's a garage sale, if there's a number on there, if he sees an address, he'll go and tell them just to make sure that it is down at the end of the day, which is fine, I understand that. Yeah, but the other ones, they've actually been pulling down. And then Jason, he was around town, and I think he got five or six of them one day.
Yeah.
So, but some of them now, they're also getting smarter, and they're using a truck with a ladder or something, and they're getting them way up in there. And I'm not going to take a bucket truck down just to pull these signs off. But we are taking them down as we see them.
Would it be okay if we put something out on social media and ask the city to share it? Just letting residents and followers know, like, hey, this is actually a violation of code?
City code.
Yeah, there's a city code, yeah.
Violation of city code to place things on utility poles?
Yeah.
Do you know the ordinance?
Alicia looked it up when we were in here. She's a whiz on these things.
I have a picture of them. I'll send to you.
Thank you.
Because we had it that one night here.
Oh, it's on the social, it's in the Messenger, I think. So I've got them.
It is. That's right.
You got it? Oh, no, I do need the code number. I've got the picture. Okay.
Do we know the penalty for such violation?
It's in the code. I don't remember.
Yeah, they could get pretty steep.
Okay.
But I can tell you in a minute.
She's looking that up. Anything else?
Just the same old daily grind. It's been an interesting couple of weeks keeping up with the things that are going on. And I know one of the discussions will be the pilot program, and that kept me hopping, especially last week when it started coming up more. But we can get into that discussion. But everything right now is going well. The sewer maintenance guys have been just nonstop with things. And it's not even anymore the road paving projects. It's just been other things, as well as Chase and his group. And electric. I mean, they're all just fantastic in keeping things so that the water flows, the poo flows, and electricity comes on. So knock on wood, we've been very fortunate this summer. We really have. And we're fortunate to have the crews that we have.
It is section 130.01. And then 130.02 is painting or marking on a utility pole. So those two apply. And then the penalty, first offense is not less than 50, not more than 100, together with court costs. For a second offense, it's not less than 150, not more than 250, together with court costs. For a third offense, it's not less than 350, not more than 2,500, together with court costs. Do it three times.
Now, who gets that money if that happens, Alicia?
It depends on who is going to enforce it. If it's code enforcement, then it would go into the code enforcement fund.
Well, okay. That works.
So I mean, yeah, whoever writes the ticket and takes it to city court gets to hang out with me while we prosecute it.
Okay.
Okay. Ready for the legislative update? Go ahead.
Alrighty. So I looked at all of the new legislation and went through all of the ones that pertain to the utility service board. I provided a utility legislative summary for 2025, and I put kind of a summary of what each of the different bills say, and then what my recommendation is as to what we should do. You'll see, most of these don't really require any action. It's just making a note for if we ever have a situation that arises that would fall under this. The biggest ones that I really wanted to draw attention to, there are some changes to the executive session statute. So it's a little bit more broad than it used to be. So if we do want to hold an executive session, there are a couple of different things that we can talk about now that we couldn't before, like employee-specific compensation or employment matters, employee handbook changes, review of negotiations on the performance of publicly bid contracts, which is when public knowledge may result in increased costs. So that's something before we couldn't do, and now we can have that in executive session. And that's good. There's also a training requirement now that for 2026, for water utilities not under the IURC jurisdiction, which we are not under IURC jurisdiction for our water, there has to be a report that's done. And there's some training that's required by each board member. That has to happen once every four years. So just keep that in mind that starting 2026, we'll have to start that training. They're going to give some more guidance purportedly by October 1st, 2025. So we'll want to look at that for what that report is going to require, but they don't have that out just yet. Other ones that were relatively exciting, there's now a statute that provides that if someone is having raw sewage come out of their house into the ground, that they can have some consequences for that. So that's exciting because we didn't have that before. Trying to think if there are any others. There is a requirement that we make some changes to our agenda to provide the term for each board member and also the appointing authority. So we'll want to make sure we start incorporating that into our agendas. So those are kind of the highlights. The rest of them really just apply if certain circumstances would pop up. Some FEMA information, long-haul water information. There is an ordinance or a statute regarding data centers. So that's something we're going to want to take a look at, if that's something that's going to move forward. But that's kind of an overview. If you guys have any specific questions about any of them, I'd be glad to answer those. Otherwise, you've got the document, so you're welcome to take a look at that.
If you will send me your term, I know who your authority is, but I don't know what the terms are.
I don't have any idea. I have no idea.
I think I have that. I think we have that in our office.
2025 to 2029, probably. But the others, I'm not sure about. So if you get that to me, I will incorporate it into the.
Okay. I'll send it to you, Mike, because I'm pretty sure that Patty in our office takes care of all of that because she's the one that prepares all of the documents when you get sworn in and everything. So I'm sure she has a list of whose terms are what.
Yeah, just send that out, and then I'll make edits to the template so that it's in the footer at the bottom, just like our names already are.
Perfect. Perfect.
Okay. Anything else?
No, unless there's any specific questions or anything you want me to elaborate on.
As far as that training goes, do you know, will that be sent to like Todd? Is that sent to you? Is our.
They don't have the guidelines out yet. So I'm hoping that when, so I've got that October date noted in there. My plan is after that date to kind of look and see what they've put out and see if there's any specific courses that they're offering. But at this point, I don't know the answer to that.
But it's just for water, you said, right?
It's for, yes, it's for water utilities that are not under the IURC jurisdiction. So if we were under IURC jurisdiction, you would not have to do the training, or if we didn't have a water utility. But we do, and we're not. So, training it is.
That's a weird one.
There are a lot of weird ones, I'll have you know. But that one, yeah, that one's one of the new ones.
I'm curious to know or find out too if it's more for groundwater, or I could see for surface water, but not so much for groundwater. You know what I mean?
I don't know.
By the way, they're doing that.
I don't know.
Whatever, each their own.
Then I was starting to really care about our water.
Okay. I like water.
All right. Moving on to approval of claims, payroll, and transfers, there is an additional claim for New York Life, Whole Life, for $924.82 that's here, and you said it's on the docket.
There's a docket that got signed, that's why I gave it to you.
Yeah. So with that one, that would be an addition, a motion to approve.
I'm going to reapprove the claims that were presented.
Motion by Krista.
Second.
Second by Rick. Roll call, please.
Josh Hewitts.
Aye.
Rick Gunion.
Aye.
Krista Stilwell.
Aye.
Mike Ritter.
Aye.
Mike Kelly.
Aye.
Unfinished businesses. We can begin a discussion of pilot. You want to lead that, Todd?
Not really, no. I'll let you guys. I'll just see where you're going with it, and then I'll jump in.
I know Josh and Rick both had some questions, so one of you have, go ahead.
I brought it up, gosh, it's probably been, I don't know, two, three meetings ago now, and started doing some research on how the pilot, how that is statutorily prescribed and how we are proceeding with making pilot payments. Those were two issues, how that pilot payment is calculated. There is a formula that you use that we've discovered, and I don't think that was used. There's no record of that formula ever being used. The number was just arbitrary.
Correct. That's what I found, yes.
So, you know, and I said this, I know I told Todd this, it didn't matter to me what the number is, as long as we're doing it correctly and it's above board. And right now, I can tell you in with a fair amount of confidence that we are not doing it correctly, and it was not calculated correctly. And there are a whole slew of procedural issues that need to be taken care of. One, starting with Indiana Code 8-1.5-3-11, which lays out the funds management for a utility and how that is to be carried out by the municipality's fiscal officer, which would be the clerk treasurer. So it goes very clearly. It states that there has to be a creation of a cash reserve fund by the legislative body that must include in the municipal general fund budget as revenue in lieu of taxes an amount or equal to the actual balance in that cash reserve fund as of June 30th of the year that their budget is being made. So if you go on to read this statute, and I won't bore you with it, they have to ask for that money every year, and it has to be put in their general fund budget. We can't just make payments of an arbitrary amount like we've been doing. So that was the most concerning thing to me, was that those steps had not been followed. Or at least, I couldn't find any documentation where those things had been carried out. And then I know that there's also an additional Indiana Code, it's 8.1.2.2-22. And I think Rick referenced this when he emailed us early on after we had this conversation, about how those are calculated and what is and is not taxable. Some of the items, we were paying payments in lieu of tax on items that there are no taxes for.
So there's also that section, the 8.1.2.2- whatever you just said. That one's particular to municipal electric utility programs.
Correct.
We were paying payment in lieu of taxes based on 8.1.5.3.8, which is the rates and charges. So that one provides that it's basically the way that you are to calculate it is it is supposed to be sufficient to compensate the municipality for taxes that would be due with the municipality on the utility property where it privately owned. And then it can be transferred to the municipal general fund if the legislative body so elects. So that's what we have been operating under, is that 8.1.5.3.
That's fine, and I understand that. I don't think you can ignore the other statute.
The other statute, let me pull that one up real quick. Hold on. You said it was 2.2- what?
8-1.5-3-11, funds management.
Oh, that one I don't disagree with. They should, we should create the fund and have that request. Like you said, I don't disagree with that at all. What was the 8.1-2.2? What was that one?
That was one, I believe, you were just.
I was talking about.
About only on electric.
Yeah. So that one pertains specifically to electric utilities. I'm not sure exactly. Oh, here it is, 22. So yeah, so that allows for the payment in lieu of taxes for electric utilities. I think we, because of that 8.1.5.3.8, we can do it on any utility, not just electric utilities. So we can do it on municipal water and wastewater. That specific statute pertains directly to electric.
I agree with wastewater and electric infrastructure that's inside the corporate city limits of Frankfurt. I wholeheartedly disagree with electric infrastructure that exists outside of the city of Frankfurt's taxing authority, which includes the waterworks.
Yeah, and I was going to mention waterworks as well.
The entirety of the waterworks on Armstrong Road, water pipes under the ground in Frankfurt, sure. If that's taxable, that's great.
Well, and the statute does say, to that point, Josh, the statute does say that it is the amount that would have been paid in
Correct.
property taxes if it were a privately-owned entity. So I mean, to that point, if it's not in the city limits, you know, if there's no property tax that would be collected, then that wouldn't be part of that.
Yeah, so I think we agree on that. The other thing with that is also, is I don't have any issue per se with all of the utilities generating the funds that go into the pilot payment. That's fine. Water can contribute to that, you know, all four of them. But I don't want to pay payments in lieu of taxes on things that are outside the corporate city limits of Frankfurt. And I think, and I think we agree on that, but I think in the past, that's how it's been calculated.
I can't speak to how it was calculated, other than my understanding was that the city and the utilities came to an agreement, and that was what was utilized. So I can't speak to the calculation at all, other than that's what was determined.
And please don't think that any of this is pointed at anyone. I'm just making an observation of how things are, and I don't think it's correct. That's just my opinion.
Well, speaking of the calculation, because it came up last week, it was last Monday, I believe, so I was getting into it. Had several phone calls and did some homework. Andrew helped me as well. And I've talked to several communities for people, my cohorts and other communities, and they all sent me the same formula. And it's your undepreciated values, and it also has depreciated value in there too.
It's net utility.
Net utility. You divide that by three, take it times the city tax rate, and that's the formula that people are using. And it actually is a formula that's on the IURC website. But if it, you know, right now, we're paying $450,000 in pilot. If you use the formula in the four areas that we do pay pilot in, the formula comes up with $168,123. And the key there is, according to state statute, that's our maximum pilot payment.
Can you say that number again?
168.123.
And so, if I could, I'd like to ask Alicia, do you agree that the statute reads that the amount to be paid is the same amount as would have been collected had we paid taxes on that property and no more? We don't have the luxury of paying twice that amount, for example?
Hold on.
According to stat, as I read the statute. I think it says shall be or shall not.
It says, except for a municipally-owned utility taxed under Indiana Code 6.1.1-8-3, which isn't us, the commission shall approve rates and charges sufficient to compensate the municipality for taxes that would be due the municipality on the utility property where it privately owned. These rates and charges in lieu of taxes may be transferred to the municipal general fund if the legislative body so elects. So that's what it says.
So it authorizes the amount that taxes would have been due had we been paying taxes, literally?
Correct.
Okay. So any amount above that would be unauthorized or exo statute?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that presents a little bit of a dilemma. My understanding is it was merely an agreement between the utilities and the city in the past years. And I even go back, I think I recall a conversation in 2010 when that came up under that administration prior to McBarnes. And it was the same conversation. What do we agree on? It was never, what does the statute authorize, in my recollection? So that's where we are.
That's what I remember as well.
Okay. I'm going to.
As far as what you said, I just wanted to clarify a little bit. In our city general, we do have a revenue line, job, work, hire, payment.
Okay.
So is that sufficient? Is that what you're saying?
We have to, yeah, we have to have a separate fund, and then I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh.
I'm not going to correct you.
Well, but I'm paraphrasing what you said, so this is something you can correct me. So my understanding from what you were saying, though, is also the concern is that we just need to make sure that we are requesting that fund, those funds. And I think the resolution would be sufficient for that request, as long as we have a current resolution that would do that. But yeah, if we have. I think that's what it's requesting, yeah. Because it does specifically say that it can be made part of the general fund if the legislative body so elects. So if you want to put it in the general fund and you have a separate line item for it, that should be sufficient. And I would think that State Board of Accounts would have tagged us on that before. Yeah. Yeah. I do think, though, that, to Josh's point, we do need to make sure that we have regular documentation that would have the city request that in order to meet the statutory requirement that he outlined.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I remember. Yeah.
I don't know exactly how the increases happened. I think there was 360 at one time, then went to 400, and then went to 450, and then we started, you know, talking about. When I came into office, they were paying the mayor, the clerk treasurer, all these people separately. So then they kind of incorporated that, and then we had the IT service, and then we had the HR service. I mean, there's a lot of things that have happened over the years. I don't know how it all happened.
Right. But that, so.
What action, knowing what we know, what action is indicated today? How do we move forward the rest of this year?
In my opinion, 2025, Title 8, this year, it's just been updated. Title 8, Article 1.5, Chapter 3, is very, very, subsection 11. It lays it out very, very, very specifically how this transaction is to take place. And there's clawbacks in here that protect. So for instance, if there was a situation that would occur where the utilities could not afford to make a payment in lieu of tax, there's a clawback in here that says they don't have to, or that the USB does not have to do that. It cannot be anymore, it can't, what's the word I'm looking for? The payment in lieu of tax cannot exceed surplus funds that the utilities have. Therefore, they can't. So if that surplus level of funds, that we are supposed to be keeping a surplus fund that the legislative body is supposed to create, and if it exceeds that amount, we cannot, I mean, we can't pay more than what we have.
So I believe the question is, how do we reconcile the, there's a significant difference between what's been paid in the past and using the calculated method that most utilities use in the state of Indiana? How do we reconcile the difference between those?
Let me jump in for a second too, Mike. Josh, you mentioned about the stuff outside the city limits.
Correct.
This is taking the assumption that 60% of our electric is in the city limits, and it's only taking in account 40% of the water. So those numbers do have the assumptions using those percentages. So it's not that they're all, in that number I gave you, it's not 100% of electric and 100% of water.
Did you find in other communities, are we alone in that thinking? That utility assets outside of the city limits are not.
A lot of the electric on the ones that I checked with, they're pretty much just within the city limits. And all their utilities pretty much are. The one that's not is Peru. They are quite a bit different because they service Grissom in some of their outside areas. But how they're doing it, they're getting racked for almost $800,000 up there. And Josh, his name's Josh Chance, he's not real happy about that. But I do know that the other ones are pretty much tied within the city limits on their stuff, on all their utilities. We're just kind of, not an oddball, I would say. That's not a good word, because we're really good at what we do. We're different because we do span out so far with our electric territory. And our water and sewer is pretty much just inside the city limits at this point.
Where did the assessment come from?
Andrew can, it's from the information we have that we supply. the information we have that we supply, supplied to the State Board of Accounts and everything every year, they adjust it, he gets with everybody and they adjust everything on that. So it's not, we don't have a tax assessment from the courthouse like we all get for our houses and stuff like that, it's different.
I was very curious of that.
Yeah, we get like a tax assessed value of property, which then goes into the formula to figure everything or how it all works.
It's based off what's reported to the State Board of Accounts, you're right, yeah.
You can see our asset list on Gateway.
Sure, yeah.
That's where the original numbers were from. Well, the original numbers came from me, which ended up on Gateway.
Well.
Yeah, it's, the assets that we keep track of, yeah. All the distribution, all the buildings, all the machinery, all the transportation, all that.
And just for clarity, is that net present value or depreciated value?
It's net utility, yeah, so it's the.
Net present value, okay.
My question would be, do we foresee if we would go down this road, the need to have a third-party assessment of those values to ensure everything is in line, like full transparency and full not distrusting your folks? I'm just saying, if we go down the road and start to refigure this, in the spirit of calculation, in the spirit of valuation.
We may, we may have that on a, going through a side door, because it was Todd Jackson came in for our insurance reasons, and he's coming back in sometime here this fall.
So we've had like an insurance type of.
Yes.
Well, because again, it goes back to cash value versus replacement value with insurance, right?
That's why I said we might be able to come in through the side door to get, to see if we're close, anyway. Because that caused, that, we ended up paying for that assessment, didn't we?
Yeah.
Uh, what was it, a year and a half ago, two years ago?
Probably, probably a year and a half.
I know, time, time gets away, it goes too fast.
So that's a dangerous word, the word "we", who do you mean by "we"? We the utilities, we the city utilities?
Both, both, we, we, we received the bill and it said for utilities, it was X amount, for the city, it was X amount, and it was, Kent and I went into Judy's office and we said we'll do our part, and, but it was two separate invoices.
So my thinking.
Especially for the parks and street department and all that type of stuff, well, you had some, a new fire police station, and so none of that was on there, but yeah, we both parried our fair share of that.
So my thinking in, in relation to what Krista mentioned, should we desire to get a professional opinion on that appraised value or taxable value, whatever you wanna call it, I would be suggesting that we share that cost with the city equally, the city and utilities, both being interested in the actual value being correct and proper per state statute, so I, I wouldn't wanna hire that then ourselves, not involve the city in, in that effort, so.
Okay.
That way we both respect the, the numbers that come out of it, if, if we choose to go that route, I don't have any, I don't know anything that would indicate that we need to go that route, because you've benchmarked other communities, you've done a lot of work with, with Andrew, so I don't see anything right now that leads me to believe we need to do that, but.
And I do have Crawfordsville's numbers, and I think I have Lebanon's as well, but we're what, it was about one point, one point five million difference in our assets to Crawfordsville assets, and we're really comparable in size, so I think that we're, we're actually pretty close, I know they, and theirs is gonna be a little bit different, because they have at least one new, brand-new substation, if not two at this point in time. But power usage and stuff, we're real comparable, but I'll tell you what, their tax rate is high over there. It's one, it's, it's one and a half times what Frankfurt's is.
I wish people knew that. Lebanon's was outrageous.
Mm-hmm, Crawfordsville is too, it's only, it's just a little shy of four dollars per hundred.
I just know that recently, the state obviously recalculated the property tax formula, and it changed people's property taxes quite a bit at the residential level, and obviously if this audit or assessment or appraisal, whatever word it is, occurred a year to eighteen months ago, I would still be a little leery of relying on those numbers, knowing full well how many changes have happened tied to tax assessed values in the state. And so, you know, and hearing Andrew wholeheartedly say he would love some sort of formal valuation process, I do think that would be something valuable for discussion, just to ensure that the numbers are true, and I hate to say it like we're not using true numbers.
So the one thing though that I would caution against is, it does say net utility. It does not say assessed tax value.
Sure.
So, like, the I U R C specifically says net utility, which would be what we have in subtracted out depreciation, so.
Yeah. We are dealing with an appraiser right now, we need an easement for the Jefferson Sewer Project that we're working on, and he's a very, very nice person, I could talk to him to see if he has ever done anything like this or steer us in the right direction on somebody that could do it. I can do that tomorrow, that's not a problem, if you guys, if you guys want me to.
I can think in the spirit of fact finding, I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but in the spirit of fact finding, I just feel like we wanna have the whole picture really concisely and accurately figured, because by no means do we, as a body, want to go down this road of moving money around or taking money away or anything like that, unless it's, unless it's all buttoned up. Right, that's the whole goal of this entire process.
It's like Andrew said today, numbers don't lie, the math, the math doesn't lie. So if you guys want me to go do that, I can contact him and just see what he says and have a conversation.
Judy, I believe I said earlier today, follow the data, right?
Yep. Jada Wright.
Yeah, she mentioned Jada Wright utilized sometimes a third party.
Well, key, key in that process is what Andrew said, it's utility, net value, it's not assessed value.
Right.
Traditional.
Yeah.
That's what the I U R C says.
Correct.
Is that use net utility and plant.
So unappreciated value minus.
So, can we come by consensus, agree that we'd like to have a assessment made of our utilities and how it would apply to the pilot program, keeping the, using the rules that they have on what can and can't be used and.
And again, I think since we want this, my opinion is that
I think so.
That the payment's on us, not any part of the city, because we're requesting that for the figures we've got right here, the.
But at the same time, it could affect them in a big, big way.
In the spirit of cooperation though, I think, and, and as Rick alluded to, everyone having trust in the numbers, because we've agreed to hire the same person to do this, that's the, I can just tell you from experience, that's the way to go. Because you start getting to financial companies, you know.
Yeah, what we, what we don't want, I appreciate your thoughts there, what we don't want is, we hire a company A,
Right.
the answer isn't real plausible to the city, so the city hires company B, comes up with different numbers, then who are we to do?
Right.
We don't wanna do that, so.
That's not what this is about, right?
No, no, Judy.
I like to refer to it as stupid Bill Warren.
They're the ones that brought that before us, because they knew what we're paying, and then they figured this, and we may came up with like seven hundred and some thousand.
Twenty-seven.
And I agree with that, but I'm just saying, that's how I think we came about on the city side, is because they suggested like, because if we don't, we're gonna be struggling to run in the city, I'm just gonna be honest with you, so that's why they suggested sort of a development commission for like the firing, the hiring of firefighters, they said maybe the pilot, and yeah, Caitlin and the officers, I don't know Caitlin, I know who she came up with, but I don't know what she used either, if that's what. So there is, I know what I'm saying, that's I think why it happened.
That's who I've been talking to, her names, her, her numbers have changed drastically.
Yeah, he's only five hundred and something.
And then it's changed again. I talked to her this morning, it's changed again.
And, just for full transparency, I, I don't, I am not opposed to the utility helping the city or making a payment in lieu of tax, as long as it's by the book, and if, if, if it ends up the case, there's a whole other section here, in here, where a utility can loan a municipality money, which is what we did for years, prior to, so, so let's call it, so that was my point, is if the payment in lieu of taxes, if it's more than what it should be, and the city needs more, then let's call it what it is, then, it's not a payment in lieu of tax, this part is payment in lieu of tax, this part is an operating loan, essentially from the city that you can, that the city can use for twelve months of the year, and it's gotta be paid back by December thirty-first, isn't it, so.
I think if we, if we, I'm hearing we're going this direction, I think I wanna reinforce again what Andrew said. This, this is a very specific basis that we're looking for, it's not a
Right.
general valuation as in a property evaluation, right? So, just to be clear, we, I will make sure we get what we're looking for, not something, somebody gives us that we, they think we want.
And be prepared to pay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because it won't be inexpensive, yeah.
So do we need a motion for this that would resolve that we are going to move forward seeking that type of an assessment?
I think you can do it by consensus until we're at the point where we actually wanna hire someone, so if we wanna get some quotes, we wanna move forward in that direction, we can go ahead and start getting some options together, but when you actually want to hire someone, that would require a motion.
Do you think we need some sort of committee?
Well, you are the finance committee.
Me, me and me alone, thank you so much.
Congrats.
I'll be there with you, I'll take, I'll take care of it and I'll fill you in.
I think, I think probably what the ideal thing would be that you as a finance committee and Todd work with the city to come up with a, someone to do this assessment under the, under the rules that are applied to pilot, and then report back, and then, and then maybe make some recommendations for, for people that would be, or companies that would do that.
What's the cap on having to have a bid, because we might get into that much money?
Um, it's usually a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, we won't get into that much money?
No, I, I imagine it will be under fifty thousand dollars, so.
I'll do it for.
So we'll be fine.
Um, could I, could I make a recommendation that Andrew be included in this, because he's such a knowledge expert in.
I think he was part of the finance committee anyway, but.
I wanted to get him named.
I'm getting T-shirts, man.
So that's for, that's for the side of it that is assessing the value, correct?
Yeah.
For the calculation.
Yeah.
And then from the procedural side of it, would you like to?
Yeah, I can, I can look at the procedural side of it, that, that statute, I need to review it a little bit more carefully, not on my phone, because it's pretty small, but I'll take a look and I'll work with the clerk treasurer's office to make sure that we get that set up the way that it's supposed to be.
Okay. So I'd like to work with you on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, that's great.
If that's okay with you guys.
Absolutely.
Outstanding.
Yeah, that's great.
With the, so we have, that's by consensus, you guys will do that.
Yeah.
I would like to, to just not do the new business of discussion of, of the times, we'll do that at another time. If we do change, it wouldn't take effect until January anyway, so we'll put that on a, on a, in the parking lot as Rick calls it, and I would, any other business that needs to come before this board tonight?
Claims, don't you?
I just wanted to make sure you guys all.
We already did claims. I believe so.
Okay.
We did the claims, didn't we, Andrew?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought you just did the minutes, I didn't hear you.
No, I have a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Callers in favor, say aye.
Aye. See y'all, I gotta run.
Happy golfing.
Me too, gotta go.
Go to practice, Andrew, goodbye.
Probably a game, isn't it?
Practice.